They have statues.
I'm doing good, Doc.
It was nice. Quiet, peaceful. It was nice. That's right. I was kind of excited, so. Actually, it was nice. Thank you for asking. You're on, Paul?
Yes, sir.
I hear they're very good, so enjoy.
This is down at six p.m. Let us slide to the side of the collective leaders. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. How's it going? First reading of the new year. Okay, hold this one. Mr. Egan? Yes, sir. Could you approach? Do you want to address as the agenda item comes up?
As the agenda item comes up, this is whichever your preference is.
We'll call it like.
Generally, I understand that you'd like to take things in the order of the agenda, so.
Yes, sir.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next time, please. Would anyone else from the public like to address the second council? Okay, we'll press. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
What's approved?
There's a motion approved and a second one to. With the.
What did you?
With you.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Rock, excuse me. Councilman Vadia.
Hold the council, please.
Miller.
Here.
Quiros.
Aye.
Aye.
Ortega?
Aye.
Venteria?
Aye.
Dura?
Aye.
Aye.
And the agenda is two. Next slide, please.
Item number five, under the regular agenda, I'm sorry, under item number six, is a discussion item. This is under reappointment of Alderman Miller to the path to a preso district board of directors for 2022 and 2023.
Yes, sir. If. Appointment at the cat, I mean, it's critical that we have a member representing our community. And I'm glad that it's Walter Miller. He's someone that's very well versed in our city and I think an excellent choice for him to continue on the board there. Sir?
Thank you. You worked really. It is an interesting committee, but necessary.
Thank you. I appreciate your trust. Yes, sir. You have full endorsement. Thank you. Is there any further discussion from any councilman? Okay, next agenda item, please.
Okay, item number seven. This is a public hearing on the second reading of ordinance number 0272, amendment number two, and ordinance amending ordinance number 0272 of the town of Horizon City adopting the municipal budget for the 2021-2022 fiscal year to allow for the budgeting and expenditure funds for the purchase of software and related equipment for timekeeping slash scheduling, budgeting, contracts slash dating management and security, and providing for repealer and severability clauses.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Pat Reddell, Finance Director. This amendment that we're proposing is to cover expenditures for software that we find that we need, but we were not in a position to include it in our original budget. The software will enhance our work, our ability to do our work, and also make some things more presentable to the public.
And the funds are coming from?
The funds are coming from our reserve funds. We have had very good excesses in the last two, the last two budget seasons, the last two fiscal years, and various amendments that we have done have chosen to use those excesses for to cover these expenditures.
Thank you, Ms. Reddell. Would anyone from the public like to address this agenda item? Okay, if anyone wants to address the council, I'll hold it up here. And move on to the this action.
Okay, item number eight. This is the discussion and action portion of this same item as previously read.
Is it approved? Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Second?
Mr. Mayor, may I just comment? I just wanted to say that I clarified in the caption and in the recital and added document management so that it corresponded with the exhibit. That's the only change. I just clarified what the funds are, how the funds will be spent.
Okay, thank you for that.
I just want to make sure.
Could you motion still?
Yes.
One second. Hold the council, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Quiros?
Aye.
Ortega?
Aye.
Venteria?
Aye.
Dura?
Aye.
Corre? Aye.
Who cares?
Okay, item number nine. This is a discussion and action. This is on a resolution that the mayor requests to sign a software, here's the title, service agreements between the town of Horizon City and Tyler Technologies Corporation.
Pat Reddell again, Mayor and Council. This software is one of the ones that we just hit the amendment for. It is a timekeeping scheduling software that will work along with our existing financial software, and it will greatly, greatly, once it's installed, greatly improve the payroll process.
And this is one program that I use a lot to approve time cards and things like that. It's very many.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second, Alderman Miller. Are there any further discussion from the council? Now, hold the council, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Quiros?
Aye.
Ortega?
Aye.
Venteria?
Aye.
Corre? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reddell.
Okay, item number 10. This is a public hearing on the second reading of the ordinance vacating a 2.416 acre portion of the city right of way known as LTV Road located within a portion of New Clark Survey number 297, town of Horizon City, El Paso County, Texas, providing for repealer and severability clauses. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and the shop lady of planning directors. Can you all hear me?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Turn the batteries up. This is the second reading of the vacation ordinance for a portion of LTV Road. Council may recall.
Chief. Chief, you can take this one.
This application was first submitted to the city back in early 2020. We processed the application. Thank you. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval. We brought it to council, and council approved the application, so we moved forward with drafting the ordinance. However, we found out that the county owned the area in East Temple, and so we had to work with them to acquire the property. We're still working with them. Council approved a purchase agreement at their last meeting, and so we're waiting to get the executed copy from the county to close on the property. So staff is recommending approval of this vacation. However, it's subject to the closing on the purchase of that property. And so again, it's just over 2.4 acres in size. The area around it has since been developed. The reason for the realignment of the roadway is to conform with the city's major thoroughfare plan. This is the area in question. So you can see that orange east-west line here, that is Cleric Cup now, and the developer has provided a north-south connection, which remains LTV Road. And council provided that direction to limit any issues for the property owner to the south so that no address changes would have to be done. They will maintain their address on LTV Road. This is the notification map. By law, we have to send notices to everyone who owns property within 200 feet of the subject property. Now, when you're sent the notices for the original public hearing at planning and zoning, the parcel layer had not been updated because it hadn't been platted yet. And so we just did our best estimate as to who we needed to notify that included the property to the south. Now that the parcel layer has been redrawn because the areas have been platted, it's no longer included in that area because it's not within 200 feet. However, because the property owner was notified originally, we went ahead and extended a notification to that property owner for tonight's public hearing. This is the location map of the overall development, Rancho Desierto Bello, Unit 13. This is just zoomed in a portion of the plot to show the original delineation of the road and then the new roadways that have since been constructed. This is both phases of Unit 13. The next item on the agenda is Phase Two of the development, the recording plan. And so if council allows, I'll go ahead and discuss that briefly. This is the aerial of Rancho Desierto Bello, Unit 13, Phase Two, location map, and the recording plan. And the reason that I wanted to discuss this with that item is because there was a condition on this plot, on the final plot, that it could not get recorded until the vacation of LTV Road was finalized. Since we're still pending the closing on the property, this would also be subject to that closing. And with that, it is a public hearing for the second reading, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions after that.
Thank you, Ms. Reddell.
Thank you.
Would anyone from the public like to address this agenda item, please? Yes, sir, Mr. Egan.
My name is Michael Egan. I am the property owner of the address located at 1 LTV Road. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to very briefly address it. As you may be aware, LTV Road served as the dedicated access to the facilities located at 1 LTV Road for over 30 years, and not only as physical access, but a certain type of access. And I object to any vacation or realignment of LTV Road, and in doing so, I consider that a taking. That's all my comments. Thank you.
Would anyone else from the public like to address this agenda item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Yes? Okay? Yes, please do.
My name is James Davis. I live in 14115 Goose Valley. First of all, I want to say I'm not here to comment on no one else but my property. I'm not concerned about what else in Horizon. Nothing else. The only thing I'm concerned about is my property. I want to put an open-air carport in my driveway because I had to get extra cars to take care of my dog when he come down to hit me, keep my puppy out.
You want about a carport, right?
Aye.
A carport?
Yes, sir.
That's further in the agenda.
It's number 18, sir.
Further than the agenda?
Yes, sir.
We'll get you, all right? Will anyone, anyone else from the public like to address this agenda item? I'll close the public hearing.
Item number 11. This is the discussion and action portion of this same item as previously read.
We've discussed this often in this council. I, you know, we've never, this first time I've heard of an objection, but we're in the process, so.
Well, there was an objection at the planning and zoning commission meeting, and I believe that the initial application action that the council took back in March of 2020, Mr. Egan expressed the same concerns. However, let's see if I can. In order to address some of the concerns, given the traffic, the type of traffic that's coming in and out of that property, the developer oversized or built a larger roadway than is required on what is the new LTV Road. Typically, residential street is 52 feet wide, and they provided a 64-foot wide roadway. They even widened the radii at the intersection of LTV and Cleric Cup to allow for those larger trucks to make those turns more easily. So there have been some accommodations made, and again, the location of the area in question is farther than 200 feet away from the nearest property line to Mr. Egan's property. The roadways have been constructed, dedicated, and accepted by the city, so they are public roadways.
There's a question. This is all complete. Both roadways, both new roadways are in complete.
Yes, sir.
Which were all initial conditions to be in.
Exactly, percent.
Remember that road was going to be wide, too, to accommodate large trucks.
I have a few little questions. I guess I'm just trying to better understand. Could you refresh my memory on what the reason why we were having the vacation of that property?
Sure. It was because the developer was trying to meet the city's major thoroughfare plan. So originally, again, that roadway came off a derrington and curved south. However, the MTP calls for an east-west minor arterial, and so in order to do that, they had to make a 90-degree intersection essentially. So they vacated that or requested to vacate that portion that curves down to the south.
So we're requesting the developer to vacate, not Mr. Egan?
No, the developer has requested to vacate that portion because they've dedicated, correctly, dedicated and approved other roadways to accommodate that.
We're purchasing that.
We, the city, has to purchase it from the county, which is an unusual circumstance. Typically, roadways are not owned by, they're owned by the abiding property owners. In this case, the county owned the underlying fee, and so we cannot vacate something that we do not own in fee or by easement. So we had to vacate, or I'm sorry, acquire that from the county in order to vacate it to the developer. We're still working through that.
Is there a motion on the floor? Are we ready to discuss?
Yes. I'd like to hear legal comment on this. It's something that we followed the procedures that we needed to. I heard Mr. Egan say that he considers this a taking, so I'm just, would like to comment on that.
Sure. Alderman Miller and other council members, because there will be access provided, there is another taking, and that road has been constructed. In fact, what I'm hearing is that it exceeds what would have been there, so there is no taking at this point. And in fact, council needs to follow its comprehensive plans for streets, and I believe that's exactly what they're doing, and requiring the developer to correspond with all or to comply with all the corresponding codes. So I believe that we're in good condition.
Thank you.
Just like to have everybody go to quick point D on that item, please. The comment statement. Okay, on the very bottom. It says after the recording, return to the name of the person there, John Duran, RKM Land Partners, LLC. Just to, for the record, that's not me. I was reading all of this, and I've never worked for RKM Land Partners, just for the record, and that is not me. Glad somebody has a great name like that out there.
Thank you.
That's all I want.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Is there a motion on the floor? Is there a motion to approve? And a second. If there are no further questions, please hold the council.
Miller?
Aye.
Quiros?
Aye.
Ortega?
Aye.
Venteria?
Aye.
Dura?
Aye.
Corre?
Lady.
Who cares?
Item number 12, discussion and action. This is on a recording plan application and authorizing the mayor to sign the recording plan for Rancho Desierto Bello, Unit Number 13, Phase Two, SUB 002478-2021, legally described as a portion of Lee Clark Survey number 297, Town of Horizon City, El Paso County, Texas, application submitted by Train Associates, LLC. Again, council, this is a recording plan, and it will be subject to the closing on the property for the LTV Road vacation and the finalization of the vacation request. In addition to that, the developer has provided both maintenance funds that were referenced in the memo to council.
Thank you. Is there a motion? There's a motion to approve. Is there a second? And a second from Alderman Dura. Hold the council. If there's no further question for comment, hold the council, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Quiros?
Aye.
Ortega?
Aye.
Venteria?
Aye.
Dura?
Aye.
Corre? Extension.
And the motion carries.
Item number 13. This is a discussion item. This is the first reading of an ordinance adopting a zoning change within the municipal limits of the town of Horizon City, Texas. Rezoning one parcel from PUD to C1 containing approximately 8.69 acres, being a portion of Section 31, Block 78, Township 3, Texas and Pacific Railroad Company surveys, Town of Horizon City, El Paso County, Texas, south of the intersection of Canazo Avenue and Eastlake Boulevard, and authorizing the notation of the change on the official zoning map of the city, providing for the following findings of that repealer severability and proper notice of hearing. Mayor and council, I would like to present the next four items together. The first two are first readings, and so we plan to bring those back to council for the second reading and public hearing in February. The two zoning requests are for properties on either side of Horizon Middle School and Desert Hills Elementary. They're both currently zoned PUD and Unit Development. The original request was to rezon them to C2 commercial. However, the staff presented a recommendation to the planning and zoning commission to recommend a C1 zone. It's more利于 commercial uses that are allowed, and given their proximity to the schools, we thought that was a more appropriate zone, and the planning and zoning commission agreed with staff. The applicant's representative stated that the applicant was in agreement with that as well, and so what we're presenting to council tonight is a recommendation. is a recommendation to change it to a C one zone. This is the city's future land use map. It does call for medium to high-density residential. However, this is along Canazo. It's on the front edge, and it's consistent with the surrounding land uses um, in the, the changing commercial corridor along that roadway. This is the aerial of Canazo Estates, unit one, which is parcel two on the rezoning. This is the location map. The survey for the rezoning request, and you can see that they've updated that zone to C one. And the revised plat that we received this afternoon. Um, it does meet all of staff's comments. We are recommending approval of the preliminary plat for this unit. I just wanted to emphasize this area because the applicant, again, is required to comply with our major thoroughfare plan. In order to do so, they have to dedicate additional right of way on Glen Warner. And so they're dedicating and improving approximately three thousand square feet of right of way in this area. Canazo Estates, unit two. Here's the uh, location map. And the survey. And the revised plat, again, to meet the MTP. They're dedicating right of way to extend Rodman across this property uh, at sixty-four feet wide. There was one um, oversight here. The lot and lot numbers were at some, one point removed, and so they will need to be added back in. So that is a condition that staff is recommending on the approval of this plat, that they add those lot and lot numbers. These are the cross-sections, so then they're proposing that top cross-section, which does meet the city's minimum requirement, which is in the center. And then along Canazo, we have an existing one hundred and twenty feet foot right of way, so no additional right of way or improvements are required on Canazo. And again, uh, staff is recommending approval of both preliminary plats, unit one and two. Unit two with the condition that the lot and lot numbers uh, be included, and then the second reading will come back next month.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen. It's also the discussion item, discussion. Uh, this is the first reading of the ordinance adopting a zoning change within the municipal limits of the Town of Horizon City, Texas. Rezoning one parcel from PUD to C one containing approximately four point four 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 acres, four four acres, uh, being a portion of third, section thirty-one, block seventy-eight, township three, Texas and Pacific Railroad Company surveys, Town of Horizon City, El Paso County, Texas, north of the intersection of Canazo Avenue and Horizon Boulevard, and authorizing the notation of the change on the official zoning map of the city, and providing for the following findings of that repealer severability and proper notice and hearing. Item number fifteen. This is a discussion act, discussion and action uh, item uh, on a preliminary plat application, SUB zero zero two four eight nine dash two zero two one for Canazo Estates, unit one. Uh, a property legally described as being tract eight, section thirty-one, block seventy-eight, township three, Texas and Pacific Railroad surveys, Town of Horizon City, El Paso County, Texas, containing, containing four point nine four four acres. Plus or minus, application submitted by Conde Incorporated.
Peter Rand. We're gonna go to Alderman?
This is the first section, I think. Everybody presented it.
All right, um. Is there uh, any uh, questions or comments about this?
What we're doing here is changing from PUD to C one.
Right.
And PUD was not work for, for plan.
Right, they're doing, they're proposing to do more traditional commercial restaurants and things like that retail.
And not combined with the actual.
But tonight, the only action that's being um, requested is on the plat.
Is there a motion on the floor? Four.
Item thirteen?
Item fifteen.
Number fifteen.
Item fifteen.
I will move to approve that.
There's a motion, uh, for item number fifteen. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second? Call the council, please.
Miller.
Hi.
Quiros.
Hi.
Ortega.
Hi.
Fronteria.
Hi.
Duran.
Hi.
Corral.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item number sixteen, also discussion and action. This is on a preliminary plat application, SUB zero zero two four nine zero dash two zero two one for Canazo Estates, unit two, a property legally described as being tract nine, section thirty-one, block seventy-eight, township three, Texas and Pacific Railroad, Railroad surveys, Town of Horizon City, El Paso County, Texas, containing eight point six nine five acres, plus or minus. Application submitted by Conde Incorporated.
Again, the staff recommendation is approval with the condition that the lot and lot numbers being included on the basis of the plat.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? And a second? Are there any further questions or comments from the council? Second. Call the council, please.
Miller.
Hi.
Quiros.
Hi.
Ortega.
Hi.
Fronteria.
Hi.
Duran.
Hi.
Corral.
Motion carries.
Item number seventeen, discussion and action. This is on a preliminary and final plat applications, SUB zero zero two four seven zero dash two zero two one for Horizon Town Center, unit four, a property legally described as being a portion of CD Stewart survey, number three twenty-one, Town of Horizon City, El Paso County, Texas, containing eleven point zero three acres, plus or minus. Application submitted by Conde Incorporated.
Mayor and council, this is a preliminary and final plat for Horizon Town Center, unit four, residential subdivision. The zoning map has not yet been updated. It was, this area was recently rezoned, and so including the zoning map that was approved with that rezoning request. It's the area that is zoned R two, and then the ponding area, which is this rectangular area just north of the development here, which is technically zone C two commercial. This is the aerial. And the location map.
Did you back, back up?
Sure.
Kind of where you're listening.
Sorry, yes, the Walmart is just to the east of this development, and I guess school is across the street there. This is the preliminary plat. So what has changed since the, the first preliminary plat was submitted is the configuration of the pond. Uh, that zoning plan showed it um, in a different configuration, and they've since changed that, and that's fine. They've shown it on both preliminary and the final plat. Uh, they are proposing to dedicate that to the city for maintenance. They're proposing thirty-nine lots in this subdivision. And these, this is the cross-section that they're using for the residential roadways, which does meet the city's minimum requirements. The issue with the pond is that typically the city engineer uh, recommends that the city accept ponds that serve both commercial and residential development, only when the amount of wa- of residential water is fifty percent or more that's entering that pond. In this case, at full buildout, it will be significantly more commercial water that's entering that pond. So we are working with the developer on a, an agreement that um, will likely include a, a payment of fee, of maintenance fees upfront to the city uh, for that pond, and it's about an eighty-twenty split, so eighty percent commercial water versus twenty percent residential. So we are discussing that with the developer and our legal team, and we anticipate that we'll have something for council. Um, hopefully when the next uh, commercial subdivision comes, comes to council. It's getting ready to go to this planning and zoning next week. And so with that, uh, staff does recommend approval of this plat. It does meet all the minimum requirements.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion.
Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
And a second? If there are no further questions or comments from the council, please call the council.
Miller.
Hi.
Quiros.
Hi.
Ortega.
Hi.
Fronteria.
Hi.
Duran.
Hi.
Corral.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item number eighteen, discussion action. This is on providing direction to staff regarding potential amendments to the municipal code to allow for certain carport structures.
So as Mr. Davis mentioned, uh, staff gets requests for carports quite often. Our code does not typically allow for them. Um, most of the time, it's in the, the um, it's a canopy that's being requested. In, in Mr. Davis's case, it's a built structure. Um, not quite like this, but it is a, a more sustainable structure that they're proposing. And so because we continue to get these requests, staff, um, and they talked to Mayor Mendoza about this, we thought it was a good idea to bring it to council to get some direction before we go through that effort of crafting an amendment, taking it to planning and zoning, uh, reaching out to utility companies, to emergency services district number one, um, and then bringing it forward to council. And so um, what staff envisions for carports is something like what's in front of you here. Something that's built in the same manner or something similar to the main structure, uh, that maintains the side setback at an appropriate distance from the front property line uh, throughout. This is another example of one. You can see that side setback is maintained, and it, it looks like the home. What we want to, what we don't want to allow, or what we want to discourage is this type of structure. It tends to deteriorate much faster, which could be um, a liability issue or just an aesthetics issue. Or something like this that doesn't look like the home. These are some structures that we've seen around Horizon that we're working through code enforcement on. So we'll look at both structures in the front yard and structures in the side yards when allowed. You have some lots that have really wide side yards that can accommodate a structure and still meet the side setback. Um, however, we have people that are building them up to the property line or up to the rock wall. The importance of a side setback is for proper separation between homes, so if one were to catch fire, it doesn't jump as quickly to the next structure. It also provides EMS, the space to get to the rear of the home if necessary. And so that's why I mentioned coordinating with, with ESD one, because that's always um, a concern of the fire marshals. We want to make sure that we're coordinating any changes with him as well. Another similar structure in the side yard that is not allowed today, and we would not recommend to council to continue to allow. Um, this is, one, it's a canopy, and two, it's, it covers the entire side setback. And so, again, right now, we're working with code enforcement on these illegal structures, and then um, we would like to come back to council in the future if you all agree tonight um, with some standards that, that we can implement. I have any questions?
I, I, I've, I've driven out around town, and I see a lot of carports that uh, some, uh, most of them, um, are still lying, you know? I mean, uh, we're uh, and, 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 you know, there's a fine line between allowing property owners to have that liberty, because it's their property, right? But, you know, but uh, when you live in an incorporated community, you understand that there's rules, and there's limitations to what you can do. I can't raise hogs in, in, you know, at my house. I'd like to.
You can do.
I can too.
Yeah.
I can too.
So.
But you could do that in accounting, I reckon. Or, or take, you know, like these examples that we've seen. But uh, I, I think we need to uh, get this under control and uh, before, and, and some of it looks unsightly, to be very frank. Yes, sir. Uh, would you like to address the council, sir? Yes, sir, please. That was good game the other night, I remember.
Okay. Uh, first of all, I've been living here in the Washington for over thirteen years. And I'm hungry since then also. And uh, now I, my daughters have to come down sometimes, kind of hit me with my property. And they need transportation when they come down. It's hard to buy an extra car, but it's rather. But I need to put a carport in front of my garage, so I can protect my cars. And uh, I bought my wife within my contract with it. So they explained to you, of course I can't answer, they can't. And I don't hear she will, so she can answer too. But this is what it's all about. Want to get a carport. Some way to put it in front of my garage. So you know, but you show me how I can get one to put there. Like, what can I do? I need to put it up and then get found, or you come to me and tear it down. Because I want to kind of get a lead about what I'm doing. And I need this from you all, and I really need that. So. Good thing I said, I should have been like.
Yes, sir, please.
Um, I'm Mr. Amigos from Ramizones, son. Uh, Mr. Davis is a typical veteran, so he's talking about coming. He was talking about coming out of his garage and needing protection, you know, from, from the weather. I understand what he's saying. I understand exactly, because we've worked in Albuquerque for many years, um, with the city saying. So a structure that, that's similar to the existing home. I mean, is that allowed here? My, my work has been done in Mexico, so Texas is.
Well, Michelle, can you?
Currently, it's, it's not allowed, and that's why we're asking the council if they want us to move forward.
We need to uh, take some course of action. It, it's gonna be a process, so I mean, you see, yeah, well, I can't do that.
Yeah, yeah.
But we have to follow ordinance and, and uh, those things. Uh, but I, I think there's, we, we can uh, I, I'd like to direct our staff to see what they can do in, in uh, in, in order to, and we'll give them guidance in, as to see where we stand on this.
Yeah.
I, I like the idea of, with a picture or something, with the structure, with a similar uh, that, that's very nice.
Yes.
And can you back that one up, I believe, though?
Sure.
One more.
Yeah, that, that, see, uh, that looks very attractive.
Those are currently not allowable?
Correct. These are pictures from the city of Volcano.
Well, some here, too.
Yeah, I see it's all, this looks very attractive. I'm, I'm not opposed to that. Yes, sir.
I'm Richard Davis, his wife. Excuse me, please. Uh, we see these pictures from the other, it's more a canopy. It's not a carport. It's a roof in front of the garage, that you protect our other cars, but cannot go in the garage. And this is not allowed. My question is, what I saw here, you see it all around our neighborhood. They have it. Why they can have it, and why this veteran, twenty-five years military, why, why we cannot have it? Then the others have it all around. And in a parcel, they have everything in, in city and parcel.
It, it's the same thing. People close off their garages and without uh, getting a permit and things like that. And there's, you know, we, we deal with these issues all the time. People just put them up. You know, it's their property. They do what they want. It's, a lot of that attitude persists. Um, but, you know, we live in a community with ordinances and, and things like that. And I, I understand people put them up. Um, and um, we're gonna have to get this under control. But uh, we're, we're gonna uh, pursue some uh, course of action with our staff, and, and we'll come up with uh, something that, that uh, that, that we can all live with and, and be in, in compliance with the ordinance. And it, it may take a change to the ordinance. We'll uh, we'll see. And, and, so, but, but I would like the staff to give us some, some ideas, and we'll work together and come up with a, a solution, I believe, that, that makes everybody happy.
That would be nice, when we can be happy. And man, I say it again. I, I don't make pictures from the neighborhood, because I know you can see it everywhere. Why they can do, why we cannot do it. I mean, that's the rules in, in Horizon. But we have to get a solution. And beside our house, it's not, we have the, side pass, we have the porn. I mean, and it's too tight, yeah? We can only one car, but we need it, this is a canopy for two cars, directly in front of the garage. And here, he helped us, the constructor, we got him on, and uh, he made uh, this uh, architecture stuff. It's very nice, and it looks good. I mean, it's not that it, it makes the, the neighborhood bad, whoops, ah, bad, yeah?
I'd like the staff in that, will uh, come up with a Bible solution uh, that, that works for all.
Very, very nice.
And keeps up the uh, the uh.
Well, as I said at first.
Thank you.
I'm not here to complain on my neighbors. I'm not here to say what, either white or I. I have good neighbors. I have good people I know here, and I'm not here to do this. What I'm here to find out is what I could do on my property. What somebody else has done on their property, not my property. My problem is what I can do on my property and remain within the law, you know, that I can, that's my interest. Other people's property is not my, I don't own. Nobody's thinking that I'm coming here complaining about this man, that man. Not my thing.
Yes, sir, I understand. But thank you, but thank you for coming out and doing it the right way.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming out and doing it the right way. Appreciate it.
I won't put it up.
To to answer Ms. Davis's question, Davis's question, a lot of many, I would say, all of the structures are built without permits and are done, you know, on the weekends when staff is not here, so um and it makes it really difficult from a code enforcement perspective to to address them. But we are working with legal like uh with the judge to to see how we can best address these illegal structures. So um it is posted as a discussion and action item, so staff is requesting direction from council.
So uh we've moved that we direct staff to come up with a solution to this issue.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. And we'll uh and and we'll work together along the line, I guess, with the something that we can all live with, you know, um because we really, we need we need to do something about it. Um are there any further questions from the council? Please call the council.
Miller?
All right.
Piroz?
Hi.
Ortega?
Hi.
Teneria?
Hi.
Una?
Hi.
One?
Who should carry this?
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item number nineteen, discussion and action that the mayor be authorized to sign a re-recognition agreement between the county of Orange City on behalf of its the Orange City Police Department and the Texas Police Chief Association Foundation.
May I ask counsel Michael Cottle, good evening? And uh four years ago, we went through the uh recognition process. And uh it's four years now and every four years you have to have an onsite uh visit, uh re-inspection, re-evaluation, uh and also you have to a contract, which that's what this is. It just says that we're gonna proceed with that situation. So I do ask that you would allow the mayor to uh to enter into this agreement so that we can continue on with uh like recognized status.
Motion.
Uh just uh just there's a question. And not a negative question, but just one for information. How does this get us better insurance rates? What what are the benefits to, say, junky public?
Yeah, a re- a reduction in liability uh because we use best practice policies that are uh that have been reviewed statewide by many attorneys, uh different cities. Um not only that, with new laws that that have come forward uh every year, uh both federal mandates and state uh laws. Uh we are oftentimes required to meet those requirements. And um and so as long as we uh stay accredited or recognized, we continue to use uh the most recent best practices and policies that are reviewed. You know, legally reviewed. And so it's a reduction in liability from best practice.
I'll second your motion.
Uh there's no further questions, the council. Uh I do want to say uh before we go to the call the council. Uh that uh thank you, Chief McCollum. You you may have released for so much, but and I appreciate it. Call the council.
Miller?
Right.
Piroz?
Hi.
Ortega?
Hi.
Teneria?
Hi.
Una?
Hi.
Porota?
Who should carry this? Make no further items on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Bye-bye.
Do you work for the city, sir? What is your title?
I T.
I T. What's your name?
Hoseu.
I'm sorry.
Hoseu.
Hoseu? Okay, thank you. Is there more than one person in the I T department? Okay.
Yes, very much so.
Normal temperature. Stranger.